There you go.
Thank you. So, we're calling the meeting to order. First agenda item is a motion to adopt this agenda.
Randy, did you hear it say that recording has started? I did not hear that.
Randy, you're muted.
It popped up on my screen that it's recording.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Sorry, Linda, go ahead.
I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
The motion was moved. Was moved, who did that, please?
Tim Wyble.
Hi, Tim, thank you. And it was seconded by you, Mary Beth, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the President's report, I think I may defer until Jim gets online. Correspondents, Annie, do you have anything?
No, we do not have any correspondence.
Okay. And then, Annie, what about considering the minutes from the last meeting?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider the minutes from the March, excuse me, the April meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
So.
Jim Lloyd, second.
Jim Lloyd, second, and it was moved by Tom.
Yes.
Tim, would you be kind enough to give us the treasure report, please?
Yes.
Linda, you need to vote on it.
All right. I'm just moving right along.
I know.
Okay, so could we have a vote on the minutes, please? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Linda, Linda, you need to note who is not present.
Okay, so let us note at the outset of the meeting, Jim Krieger is not present. I don't know who else is not present.
All else are present?
Yeah.
Scott, is there Scott here?
Dialed in.
Did Scott dial in? Okay.
Okay.
So it is just Jim Krieger. That is not present, everyone else is present. All right.
Okay, the treasurer's report, this is for the Hideaway Hills Board of Trustees Checking Account. As of April 30th, 2020, we have $125,338.60 in the Denton County National Bank. Move that this treasurer's report be accepted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are any opposed? Okay, motion is passed to accept the treasurer's report. As well as considering the minutes, sorry about that. As the meeting goes on.
I think, Linda, I think for, we ought to say that that's the committee funds. The report of the committee funds in Denton County National Bank because, you know, if we, if somebody's listening to this meeting, they're gonna say, that's all the money you got? I mean, it's the committee funds.
I have that in my notes.
Okay, so are we all right with that, then? Jim, as in Kirk, would you be able to provide the management committee report, please?
Absolutely. Clubhouse opened for outside eating and liquor sales last Friday, May 15th, and will open for inside dining and liquor sales this Thursday, May 21st.
I had a frozen pizza last night.
Processes are in place to, somebody needs to mute. Processes are in place to conform to the state of Ohio and Health Department guidelines and to keep our employees safe. We've had quite a few meetings on that, we put some, they're ready for Thursday night, assuming that their phone line gets fixed, they had to close early tonight because they had no phones. Moving on, April's numbers, the income expense report for all of Hideaway Hills showed a gain of $81,424 compared to 2019's gain of $65,66. Number is being funded by capital before, pardon me, let me, this profit number is before funding of capital, depreciation, roads, amenities, and employee insurance funds. House lost $2,826 compared to last year's profit of $1,510, but need to remember the clubhouse was closed part of the month and they could only do carryout. So they had no liquor sales to speak of, they had very little carryout liquor. Hideaway Hills funding, account funding, funding goals were adjusted at the management committee meeting of 4/28 to better reflect ongoing needs. Capital fund was raised, the goal was raised to $327,768. Depreciation fund was raised to $300,000. Employee insurance fund is $80,000, as it was. The amenities fund and the roads fund are based on the new member fees that come in that month, as always. In April, a total of $101,198.29 was paid into the funds, broken down as follows. Capital was paid $26,955.43. Depreciation was paid $64,020. Roads was paid $10,222.86. The funds are still underfunded to the tune of $401,179.40 to the adjusted goals. The office and management committee will make the determination as to the amounts in which funds are to be paid monthly on or about the 25th, which means these numbers I'm giving you are April's numbers for what's paid into the funds. In the next week, before next Tuesday night's management meeting, is when the office, Penny and Randy determine how much money is there to pay. So every month when this report is given to you, it's about 30 days old. Okay. Any questions on any of that? Okay, lastly, the management committee voted unanimously to recommend Rex Everly as the newest member of the committee and request a board member make a motion to approve. Although I think, and I don't have the latest agenda here, I think it was on the agenda that they were going to, you need to vote to accept my resignation first, and then Jim Sigafus as the new chair, second, and then Rex, third. So basically, my management report is done, does anybody have any question?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Yeah.
Here. All right. I just changed computers, I went and got my wife's. So I'm back. Good deal, thanks.
I'm not repeating my old management committee report for you.
Well, my.
I was just getting, making motions down pat, and I was getting ready to move on here to the management chair resignation. You're really stealing my thunder now.
I'll let you have it, Linda, it's all yours.
You go ahead.
All right.
All right, my president's report, I was just gonna thank you, Jim, for all the work that you've done, and how much I've appreciated working with you. I know it's, it's a time you feel that, for you to move on, and I know how much work that job is. But I just wanted to go on record and say what a pleasure it's been, and what a great job you've done. Secondly, I'm glad, as, as you said, you're welcome, it's my pleasure. The next step is, of course, to Jim Sigafus, who's been the vice chair for the last couple of years, and I worked with him for two years or three years before that, when I was on the management committee. And again, I'm really, really excited, maybe questioning his sanity for taking the job, but I'm glad, I'm glad that he is, and I look forward to working with him. Again, I couldn't give him, you know, stronger praise or stronger recommendation to step on, and I think we'll all look forward, and I know I will, to working with him as I have up to this point. And that was pretty much what I was gonna say, obviously. Hopefully, this will be the last of the, of the WebEx type meetings like this that we have to do with everybody. But nevertheless, that's, that's where I'm at with that. So you've done all the other things, correspondence and minutes and treasures report?
I think we're.
We're, I've done my management report, so you need to do the motions on Sigafus and me retiring, resigning, and then Rex Everly.
Okay. A motion to accept the resignation, to unhappily accept the resignation of Jim Kirk as management committee chair.
So moved.
Moved by Linda, is there a second?
I second.
Annie seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 That's good.
Okay, anybody, sorry, anybody opposed? All right, Jim, again, thanks so much for it, and now, we won't give you a microphone at these meetings. Can I have a motion then to nominate Jim Sigafus to take the position as chair of the management committee?
So moved.
Matthews moves, second by.
I second.
Second by Linda, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, Jim, you're on. Why, could you describe the process of Rex? Could you give us a little background, what you went through and how it all happened? Is Rex on there? I don't, he's not on my.
He's on.
He called in.
Okay, he's called in, all right, cool. Jim, could you take, take the floor for a minute, then, and tell us what, how it went through? Or the Jims, the two of you together?
I'll go. So we interviewed, what, six candidates, Jim? All in one evening, it was a long evening, but we had some very good candidates this time, I was really pleased that the, the level response came down to, we had three really strong candidates, we heavily considered. And we're recommending Rex just based on his overall skills. He had, he has a lot of experience, he works in the road industry, the paving industry, he kind of fills a void that we have as far as having that Jim McNabb-type experience on roads and road maintenance, so we were excited to have him on board, we think he can make a great member to the committee. I think we lost Jim.
I'm back, I just muted myself. Did anybody have any questions of Jim about, about Rex, or you've all seen his, everybody got to see his application resume, any other questions of him? All right, there being none, could we have someone make a motion to, we have the recommendation of the management committee, could we have a motion from one of the board members to nominate Rex Everly as the member of the management committee?
This is Annie, I'll make that motion.
Annie makes motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Linda seconds. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pardon?
I believe there's a discussion item. After we.
You're right, you're right. Yep.
I just, I, I've certainly reviewed Rex. Him, I certainly is familiar, I'm sorry, is impressive. To me, one of the biggest things that this community is facing is getting our lodge back up and going. And one of the things that I see on management as a deficit is not having anybody with any food service. One of the candidates that we had was Jeff Barron. He actually operated a restaurant for four years, starting it from scratch. And I just think that this is a time when we need more than anything, somebody with food service experience to join our management committee. And because of that, certainly no disrespect to Ricks, but I will be voting no on that because I think we need to reconsider who our candidate is and take advantage of having somebody with food service experience to join our management committee. Thank you.
Are you muted?
Am I now?
You're good.
Okay, sorry. Are there any further, any, any further discussion on this nomination? There being none, all in favor of Rex Everly for the management committee, they say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I heard nay. Yes, nay. Nay.
Is that two nays?
Yeah, I said nay also, Scott.
Okay, okay, all right. That being the case, the vote goes in, remind, if we take a roll call if you want, but I think it's six to two in favor of Rex Everly. All right. Moving right along, Rex, welcome to the management committee of Hideaway Hills.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you all.
All righty. With that, Randy, or Jim Sigafus, you have anything, would you have four of the things to say with, as the management committee report?
No, just, I just wanna say we're working hard to get the clubhouse back open. We know this is not a profitable venture at all, we're probably gonna have to go up to a third person from four to seven, just because of the, the amount of business we get, that obviously doesn't make for a profitable situation, but this is more of a situation to try and serve the membership at this point. You know, the next thing we're gonna start looking at as a committee is, you know, when can we get the lodge bar up, back open up? You know, right now, I don't think we can do the social distancing guidelines in there, but, you know, hopefully, as that relaxes, we can have a plan along with the food service committee to, you know, get, get toward where we can get our lodge bar back open, so that's, I think, a direction this committee's wanting to take. We had quite a discussion the other night about it.
Do you still have, is the food service committee still in operation?
Jim Kirk, I assume they still are, I have not had a chance to have contact with them other than John Blankenship, but.
They, they've not been disbanded, Dan Donovan's still on it, I would assume Jeff Barron's still on it. John Blankenship, Kathy, and. Pardon me? Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. We just, I went on vacation and COVID-19 shut everything down, so there, there hasn't been any meetings for the last few months. But it has not been disbanded.
Jim Sigafus, is your intention to, to keep the, that committee working?
Yes, absolutely. And I mean, that'll be a big part of trying to get the, to get the lodge bar back open up as soon as we can soften the restrictions, and that way we can, you know, I want people to be able to take advantage of that, the lodge bar during the summer, as we kind of go through the whole process of looking at when we can reopen farther down the line, when our finances allow it. So I hope that committee does stay, stay up and running, and that is a huge part of getting this back open.
All right, anybody, anybody else have any other questions, Jim? All right, then we move on, Mr. Swetnam, to the general manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna let everybody know that the, that, that I really appreciate working with Jim Kirk as well, and all that he did for me and the committee and the hills, I really appreciate working with him. For regular assessments in April, the $17,569. It went up in May to $19,748. Roads for April, was it $16,060? It went up a little bit also because of late fees to $1,700. Of course, as you know, the roads are not due until June, so that will probably fluctuate again here in, in the, in the future. Damn assessment totals at $200,620. As you notice, that, that number's going down as well. Also, wanna let everybody know that the wellhead that is out on the old Marl Diamond is going to be removed here, I don't know how soon, but ODNR stepped in. They've got a program that they're removing the old wellheads, and so that, that will be at no charge to us, we've wanted that done for quite some time. Bucky Chalmers started that here several years ago when he was president and didn't get any results back from them at all. But I got a letter from ODNR saying they will be removing that. Also, wanted to mention a little bit about the chip and seal program this year, we are getting estimates from outside contractors to do the chip and seal, just to see where that comes out at, as opposed to how much, how much we can do it for here at the club. So I'll keep you abreast of that, I do not have any estimates yet, but I've got three other, three companies that are. Also, the pool, pool opening, has been a struggle this year, not knowing how the state is going to take a look at us, or in the health department. We are allowed 26, however, we're not going to be quite ready by then. We are looking to open on June 1st, we have to get the inspection first, and we have to be ready, we've also got the pool committee project that's not completed. However, I've been in contact with Robbie, and I'm not sure where we are with that at this time. If indeed, we have to put that thing back together, we will. But it'll just be temporary fix because of that program, it's been so wet that we, they haven't been able to do anything. Also, I wanted to announce one other thing, that we've had a tree in the lake policy for quite a few years here, and we have ended up with a few trees in the lake, which I've contacted members about that. The policy is that if it falls from your property, it's your responsibility to take it out. And if indeed you can't do that, we will enlist, we will hire somebody to do that, or have maintenance do that, whichever is appropriate, and the member will be charged for that. And that's all I have at this time, if anybody has any questions, go right ahead.
Randy, I have a thought regarding the pool, and I, I wonder if this could be relayed, so that it could be considered. But it would be, I think, helpful for the community if there was a special time set aside for seniors and/or people with chronic illnesses to go to the pool.
Annie, Annie is, thank you, Linda, Annie has put together a program, which is pretty good, which is per the state guidelines, we're gonna do things, we're gonna mark the pool out in quadrants and to allow for social distancing, and so she's got a program set up for the exercise class, and so that's how we're gonna work that moving forward.
Randy, you were talking about the, the project not being complete, is that part of why that skid steer's been sitting up by the pool and the piles of dirt for, I don't know, the last six months or so?
Yeah, that's the reason. Every time it gets a little bit dry enough for them to come in, they have been coming in to, to drain that ditch, and then it rains again. It's just been too wet to do anything.
Skid steer.
Pardon me?
I'd hate to be paying rent on that skid steer.
That may belong to them, I don't know, but yes, I agree.
Randy, can I make one more point? We will have Lake Patrol out in force this weekend, patrolling the lake. Randy, do you have the times when we're gonna be out there?
Yeah, it'll be 11 to 7, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Any other questions?
How, how, how are we doing? Doing with the funds for the security, the people that we've kept on, getting our security program?
We are still paying them that program. I can't tell you right now exactly how much is left in that, but there's, it's a pretty good chunk.
So there's no reason that we have to think about laying anybody off between now and assessment, and, because originally we had planned, I'm pulling the plug on it, when we got to, to June 1, I believe.
Correct, well, yes. One security guard, so that, that fund is still there.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the pledge on that was through August, Jim, if I'm not mistaken. It wasn't supposed to end in June. At least the one I signed was that way.
I don't, we can check, look into that, my, I thought we had, when we arranged, originally did it, we were going to do it through the assessment vote, which at that time was, of course, gonna be, you know, an earlier time. So that's what I.
Too, but it seems to me it said that through July.
Okay, well, that's fine, well, as long, yeah, as long as the money's there, I certainly don't wanna, don't wanna change the program at all, that's for sure. All righty.
I think that's a good point, though, is it worth looking at projections, Randy, and seeing if we're going lower or out before September 1st?
Yes, I certainly will do that.
Okay.
All right, um, I know the, the other question or other thing I've seen is, you know, having been out on the golf course, they're doing a good job with that. We're just using our regular guys still at this time, Randy? Okay, okay.
We pulled the guys from the rest of the maintenance department to help, help up there. And there's some other things that are out on the grounds that you're not seeing, that are not getting done, but the golf course, we're keeping up on the golf course.
Okay. Are you spending less time on the golf course this year, or the same amount of time, or, I mean, obviously.
It's the same amount of time, we've got the same amount of people. It's the rest of the grounds that are suffering a little bit.
Okay. I'm assuming it's, we've been fortunate in the fact that we've just not, haven't had any real problems yet this spring, is that, is that a fair statement?
So far, so good.
Okay. What do you think will be, you know, if, if it starts to, if things get worse, if we keep trying to keep up with the, the golf course, how, what will we see suffer?
Well, a lot of the mowing, a lot of the right-of-way get cleared, some of the weed eating's not gonna get done, some of the side mounting, some of the ditching, you'll see it. We haven't, we haven't been able to install any guardrail posts. Yeah, you'll see it.
When you say ditching, is that our effort to stem the erosion of our ditches?
Correct.
No, it's serious.
All righty, anything further for Randy?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because we're coming up on that season of Roundup, and I know for two years we've had an issue with that. Is there, is there anything in place to try and keep those questionable areas, the kids' areas, the organic garden and things like that, so we don't have an issue this year with that, is there anything in place for that?
Other than the fact that we're not gonna use it anyplace.
Not at all. Well, that solves the problem, that's beautiful. All right, that's what I wanted to ask about, because I knew we were coming up on that season.
All right, very good, let's move on then to committee business and reports. Anybody have anything? Jim Lloyd, why don't you start us off? Did you hear me?
Okay, there we go, now, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah, nothing from either the airport or the range, everything's just pretty well quiet.
Tim Wyble, do you have anything at all?
Yes, this is in reference to the ORV committee. Jim Sigafus. Jim Sigafus would like to officially announce his resignation as the chairman of that committee because of his movement to the management committee head. And I think Jim's still working on trying to find a replacement, but has not found anyone as of yet. So I guess I need to ask for a motion to approve the resignation of Jim Sigafus from the ORV committee.
Tim has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, who is, who is the second from? Eric, okay. Eric, is there any discussion? This motion?
If we don't have a, this is Jim Lloyd. If we don't have a chairman for that, can he be an interim chairman until they find someone? Because they, you need a head for it anyway. Or is there a vice chairman that can take over or what?
Jim, this is Jim Sigafus. I, I've got, I've got somebody I think's close. I just need to talk him into it. If not, I'll, I'll just serve as interim chairman, or I'll see if Chaz Cross will do it until we can get somebody permanent. Just to, just to keep us, keep the committee going. I've got, I've got a new, a newer member, is part-time, but got a lot of interest in it. Just got to kind of, he's a little hesitant to jump into a chairman's position, but I'm working on it.
Okay, that's all I needed, or that's all I wanted, wanted to find out.
Good question.
Get in there until you get someone in, correct?
Yeah, I'll still help keep the committee going and keep them on track and help him, you know, so we keep the committee moving, keep, keep the maintenance up down there. So right now, we can't have the kids' ORV class, just because we can't have that big a gathering. But at some point, we'll have that over the summer also.
Okay.
Do we want to, then just withhold that, withdraw that motion and keep him there until he's got someone? We can always do it on an EVO.
That's fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
Whoever made the motion, then I'll have to do.
Does this mean my pay doubles, or is this?
Yes, yes.
Twice, still nothing.
Zero times zero.
If that's what you want to do, I will withdraw my motion then.
That's fine, Tim.
All right, Tim. Very good. All right, so Jim will stay on as chair of the RV committee until we can get a suitable replacement. Alrighty. Mr. Matthews?
Just golf, had a workday, did some cleanup, fixed the picnic tables, did some landscaping. It was just the golf committee only, trying to limit the crowd. Coming up Monday, May 25th, 9:00 a.m., the Phil Cowan Memorial Tournament. And tennis, they've canceled their workday just because the gathering, they didn't want to do it. And Health and Wellness Committee is working on enclosing the building.
It's really an improvement, just driving by, that's for sure. I've had a couple of people mention that already.
Looks a lot better.
It does. It does, indeed. All right, Eric, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got Utility Committee. They are continuing to work with South Central Power and on the project to bury the main lines. They're putting together some brochures and so forth to inform the public about, or the membership anyways, about the options for burying their overhead lines and so forth. More will be coming as far as that's concerned. They meet, they meet monthly, and if anybody else is interested in joining the committee, they should contact Eric Boiskov. And lastly, the Utility Committee has, as requested, that they have a name change, and they would like the name change to be the Utility. So I would like to make a motion to change the name of the Utilities Committee to the Utilities Services Committee.
We have a motion? Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second from Linda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Eric, could you remind me again who the members of the committee are of the new US Committee?
Ken Yost, Todd Cahill, Eric. I'm sorry, Jim, I can't, I know there's, there's.
That's okay.
More active than we've had been in probably the last five year, four years or so since I've been involved.
Oh, very much so, no question. Well, that's great. Obviously, I think the, that project's going to be a big project, and having them watchdogging it for us and staying on top of it, something I think is, is pretty important.
Yeah.
I think I saw one document which even had the, had a list of the houses or the members' lots will be able to be part of that program to bury their lines if they want. Was, wasn't it one of the documents we had?
It was. It wasn't ready for distribution yet, but.
You're right.
I don't know, I looked at that today as, I mean, my estimate would be 100, 100 would have the, have an option, their lines buried.
Yeah, I thought that was, I mean, again, I just did a quick glance at it, and I was pleased to see that that was there. Good deal. Who else do we have left? Greg Patasson, do you have anything?
Yes, FYI, we've gone from five people on the waitlist for the garden down to, we're down to two. We have all the plots out, and it just stops raining people getting in to work them. Chapel had a great flower sale that had a reorder, so that worked out very well. So, and Chapel is, is going to be starting out from the amphitheater, and they've worked out with social that there's no conflicts even on the cleanup, and that way they can maintain their social distancing. That's all.
Good deal. Linda Lonzinger, do you have anything?
Lakes had a successful pontoon launch, and nothing really more going on with Lakes at this point. The ACC had their proposed regulations in the last echo. It has one more echo to go, and without, there are no concerns, then we'll go and put those in the architectural code. And that's all I have.
Very good. Mary Beth, do you have anything?
I do not. We're, we're good with the barn and communication, so nothing to add there.
Thank you. Annie, anything for you?
Nope, nothing here.
Good deal. Did I get everybody? I think I did. Scott, Scott, do you have anything?
Nothing here.
All right. Good deal. So any fund requests then, moving along? No fund requests. We don't have open forum. So let's go then on down to unfinished business topics. And the first one on the list is the assessment increase planning. So the situation we have right now is that the annual meeting will be in August. We submitted the language, which we'll talk about a little bit later again, or whatever, which would change the implementation date of the assessment increase to follow the annual meeting. And that would be September 1, if we take the vote in mid-August, the way we're, we're looking at it right now. So I think the, I'd like to get a sense, I mean, there was, there was the group earlier, which was that Annie and Mary Beth were very much a part of, which was the, the planning for the assessment increase. So I, well, I guess the first thing is, I'm assuming we're all still on board with the idea of, of putting it up for the, for an August vote. And secondly, how, how do we get, how do we get ourselves ready for it? And with that, I'll, then I throw it to Annie, and why don't, could you take the lead on that?
Sure, I'm still in favor of us voting on it in August. I think it's definitely something we need to put for, for, not, not just us, our members, obviously. I shared our conversation from the last board meeting with the MAG committee and haven't heard anything yet. I know that we had a lot of questions that we would need to get answered if that committee is going to take that forward and worked on getting the vote out. Mary Beth, I want to add anything?
I think there, we were a little hesitant on us sort of running with that. I feel, we need to make sure we have really sort of good communication, I think, with management and prompt communication. If we're going to be working on that and maybe work on it with them together, because a lot of the questions the group had, Annie and I simply couldn't answer. And so we're going to have to have, you know, a lot of communication probably pretty promptly with management if they want us to participate in that. Do you agree with that, Annie? That was, sort of my impression was, we couldn't do it because we weren't able to answer the questions, and we, it was going to take a while for us to get the answers we needed to put it together.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the questions they had for us weren't really necessarily the personal questions the people on the committee had. These were questions that their neighbors and friends were approaching them about, knowing, those members knowing that they were on the MAG committee. So they were really just trying to help us hear the voice of the membership.
Right. And it was things like Jim talked, Jim Sigafus talked about earlier, like, what is the plan with the lodge? What are we going to do? Can we put something in writing and tell people this is what we're looking to do? What are the numbers? What are the losses? Where's the money going? It was that kind of stuff, but I think Annie and I are in a position where we can't provide that to them without, you know, somebody from management working directly with us.
I think one thing I thought was very helpful were the, the numbers that the management committee did give you, or that gave us, which are targets of what we're, you know, what we're trying to get our arms around. How much money is going to go into funding those reserves, funding the programs that we had? I think that was a huge step forward. I mean, what do you think, Jim Sigafus is, where, what's your view of this and how we can best go forward?
Well, I think I'd like to start getting some of these questions to us, so we, some of them take a little bit of time, like, you know, you guys don't have the answers. We don't always have the answers, so we can work with the office and try to help gather those answers to get to people and get the correct information out there. You know, we have a little more information than you do, but we don't always have all the answers either. So, you know, I, I'd appreciate if you guys could help, you know, work with me and Dan and, you know, JJ and the rest of the crew. We'll, we'll start getting us the questions and we'll start working with you and figuring out when we can start having member meetings to start answering these questions for people, because, you know, we can't answer all of them, but we can bring, you know, Jim Curt did a great job last year trying to bring every kind of answer he could, and, you know, you still fall a little short, but I think we were very transparent last year, and I, I plan to do that same thing this year, so.
Annie, do, and do you and Mary Beth think you have the structure of a group that could help coordinate it, whether it's exactly the same people or at least some of the same people that we could use as a, you know, to work with both the board and management to make, make this all happen?
I think we can reach out to some of the core people that were already regular attendees at the, the meetings. And you're right, Krieger, the goals that the management committee set are going to be super helpful, because the one thing that the whole committee resonated with was getting back to healthy. And so us sharing that our funds, all five of them are not in a healthy place, will help them in that message.
Did you have any comments about the stuff that's going to be in the echo? Have you seen the presentation? I mean, is that helpful that?
I think it looks great.
Ideas for improvement to make that look better?
I think it looks great. I, I almost wonder if we even open up, I don't know how we'll do this other than virtually, which can be challenging, but ask members if they have questions about it and if they don't understand what it means, with the MAG committee on that.
That sounds like a good, a good place to start, because, you know, we can, if we can answer those questions in a way that, that works for us. How do people feel? I mean, to me, it makes sense that we, we shoot for the August timeframe. But again, we, there's a lot of uncertainty out there right now. How do people feel about that? Are we going to, we just try to tough it out and push through it? Or, or do we need to revisit this again in another two months? I mean, right now, we're at May, so you've got three full months between, you know, the meeting tonight essentially and then, and the annual meeting, which we'll also have to figure out how that, how that's going to happen, whether, whether we'll have, be able to have a large meeting, and or whether we're going to do it by voting. But that's, that's a conversation for another night. But what are people thinking? Are you, I mean, is there a sense that we do go forward? Do we? You know, again, the idea being we don't want to fail. This time we want to make sure it passes, so we don't have to go through this again.
I'm going, going forward.
Okay.
I think.
Same here.
I don't, I don't think that we could possibly not go forward with it. You know, we've been looking at this thing now for over a year, or about a year, and I think just delaying it is not going to help a bit. I think we need to go ahead with it. Possibly, we could have these meetings at the amphitheater once the governor allows for a little bit, for the bigger crowds with, with social distancing, because you get a lot of people down there, and still say, stay social distancing, work right out of the amphitheater, because I really think the, the public meetings are the best way to go on this, or, well, I shouldn't say the best way, but one definite way we should go if we can, and I think they're probably going to think seriously about releasing the groups of 10 here in the next month or so.
I agree with Jim Lloyd that that August date, our club can't afford not to vote and not to get an assessment increase to help out with the finances at this point. So I think August is reasonable, and hopefully things will open up and people will feel a little more secure by then.
I think we have to go forward, and I think the success with our vote will have to do with our communications. So I think that's key. The amphitheater idea, and even if we brought in people in groups of 10 at this point, something's better than nothing, but I, I think time is getting short and we need to get started with our communication drive.
I agree. Although, as Jim Kirk and us can remember from last year, 10 people was sort of a high watermark for some of our public meetings. I mean, I, I hope we do, but it's, we'll have to see. I mean, maybe we go to, rather than a bunch of meetings, maybe just one or two, and hopefully you get a larger, you know, attendance, and then even if we want to be able to put, we can put it on, tape it and put it online as well, you know, people see it that way. I'm comfortable with that. Any other thoughts there? Eric, you got any thoughts? I mean, because it's, I think one thing that's important is that, that we, that the, that the membership of the board show a fairly consistent approach to this thing, of support for it.
My, my, my opinion is we should have done it back in May, so absolutely, let's move forward. I don't know how we can let this go and not, I mean, we, we, we need the funds to, to be, keep things rolling here. So absolutely, let's, let's continue with August.
Good deal. Scott, any thoughts?
I just, I, I think we just keep moving forward to say what everybody else has said.
Alrighty, sounds good. Well, Annie, if you could, and Mary Beth, if you guys could begin to put that group together again, certainly Jim Sigafus, and I'll be happy to do anything we can to either meet with you or help you at it, read, be part of the process. And anybody else that you want to have involved, please let us know. Because I mean, I agree, not, I, I want this thing, you know, we've already, we swung at it twice, it's the time to, time to get it done and move on with it. And it'll make a difference.
Absolutely. We'll set up some, we'll set up some time with you two before we reconvene the group, but we'll get that rolling right away.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Anything further on this at all? Seeing nothing, let's move on to the next item, which is the club lots. We talked at the last meeting when we were. We talked at the last meeting when we were looking at the sale of a couple lots about ways to analyze what sort of lots we have, what the, what the quality of them, whether they were watershed lots and things of that nature. There was one piece of information that I established with Larry Barker in terms of selling club lots is that if we did want to, like, we were talking about the ones on Beaver Lane, if we wish part of the sale, the issue that there is a, you know, basically a deed restriction that says you cannot build, that's completely legal and that can be done in perpetuity. So we could, so if we have that when we're looking to sell a lot, that is, you know, sort of an arrow that's in our quiver. But anyway, based upon that, Linda's really, and Annie to a second, have really sort of taken off on this. But Ken Yost, why don't you sort of describe what your initial steps are and where where it's going at this point?
Really, what we've tried to do is do some fact gathering because there are a lot of pieces and parts to this that we needed to fill in so that we can have a full view of all of the lots that are potentially not just club owned lots that could be built upon, but member owned lots also. So we looked at this more globally as to how we move forward potentially as as a community. So here are some facts that we've gathered. There are 707 homes currently now on Hideaway Hills that have either been constructed or are being constructed. We have, we know that from 2014 through 2019, there were 27 homes built in Hideaway Hills. We know that in that same time period, we sold 38 club owned lots. We also know that there are 68 club owned lots currently for sale that you can find on the Hideaway Hills front page. We also know that we have a total of 139 lots that could be sold, and that's including the 68. And I'm giving you this information so that you can get an idea of what could happen with our community in the next five, 10 years and how we possibly want to look forward. So if you'll indulge me a little longer. So that's 139 total club owned lots. In terms of member owned lots that could have homes constructed on them, we know that we have 43 members that have lots that don't have a home on them. Those lots could be built on. We know that we have another 200 lots that are adjacent to a home but have not been joined. Then we know we have another 185 lots that are not joined. Some of them are grandfathered. Some people have multiple lots and all of those lots are capable of being built on. For a total of, including the club owned lots, 566 potential lots that the community could build on. Now, we don't know how many will build on those lots, of course, but out of that, we have 138 lots that are club owned. Some of those are, we consider unbuildable. But I, I do understand that you can just about build on anything unless it's shale. But we also talked to Hocking County and asked them about septic and water service. And their take was that we're an outlier. They're not aware of anyone or any other community such as ours that has 707 homes with private wells and private septics. There is a concern about that. Now, Hocking County, if they're parcelling land out now, they're requiring that the land be parceled in no less than 1.84 acres. We're grandfathered, Hideaway Hills is grandfathered, so that doesn't apply to us. So in looking at our lots, the only lots that we could possibly look to control out of this 566 lots and diminished building would be our club owned lots. So that's what we have ascertained. Now, we haven't gone through, we're in the process of going through all the lots and and relooking at them, but a significant number are watershed lots, probably many more than were actually ever marked as watershed lots. Most all water goes downhill and God knows we have a lot of downhill.
And we have a lot of water right now, too.
Yeah, we have a lot of water. But anyway, that's, that's what we've found out. So it's not just a matter of club owned lots, it's also a matter of privately owned lots. And if all of those lots were built on, I don't know how we could sustain ourselves. If half of them were built on, I don't know how we could sustain ourselves. And more importantly, the majority of those lots, we can't control one way or another whether people build on them or not because they're privately owned. So that's what I know to date.
Linda, if I could just add one more point of reference. So Randy told us that our total acreage that is not the green space, like where the amphitheater is and areas like the area 54 is 1,230 acres. And if you use that number that Linda told, told you that Hawking shared with us, 1.84 acre per dwelling, you would have a maximum of 668 homes in Hideaway Hills. And as she also mentioned, we're already at 707. So if you use that as a measuring stick, it kind of gives you a sense for where we're at. We're kind of beyond what Hawking would normally recommend, even though we're grandfathered.
That's right. That's a good point.
The only thing that I would add to this, of course, is how many of these homes are not full time homes? So the, the amount of water and the amount of septic is, is lessened quite a bit if you look at it that way. So that, I think that needs to be part of the formula.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Tim, and I don't know the exact percentage. I think that was in our most recent long range plan when we did the survey. I want to say that over 50% of the homes now are full time. And there are also larger homes. And I, I would like to say that many of the homes, even if they are part time, are being used more than perhaps they used to be. But I guess more importantly, we don't know what's going to happen with the market. And more and more people, and in the trend analysis from our long range plan did demonstrate that more people are, are moving here full time. There are fewer part time and more full time. So.
Yeah, that's, I, I totally agree with that, Linda. I just wanted to make a point of that, that it's not quite as doom and gloom as what it sounds like at the moment.
Well, I think I, I do hear what you're saying and from the septic and water use, the more part timers you have, the better, but we don't know what the future will hold with that. And then there is also the issue of maintaining some green space and not becoming another subdivision like Reynoldsburg or wherever.
Right. So. Also, that you might want to think about the fact that these people that have two lots, they have two lots for a reason. They don't want anybody next door to them. And when they sell them, they're going to sell both lots. Now, there's nothing to stop that, but to kind of go along with what Tim said in the doomsday, of those lots that have no dwelling on them, but they are owned by the people next door to them, chances of them selling a lot to put a house on or selling their house with only one lot are pretty slim because if they sell their house with one lot, they still have to pay an assessment and they're still a member here. So I think you'll probably see that most of the people that have two lots that are not conjoined will, those lots are not going to be sold. Very few of them, if any, will be sold so that somebody can build a house right next door. So I think that's, you kind of overdramatized that and I don't mean that in a sarcastic way. I just don't think you're going to see very many of those, if any, sold so that somebody can build a house on them.
Well, I, I think what I was giving you is the potential exposure and what people do when they sell their homes, I, we can't control. So nor can we control whether they sell the property and it's built on. I was giving you potential exposure, so that was maximum. But there are other lots that are multiple lots that are owned by people who are grandfathered or have already conjoined, maybe two or three lots, and these lots are in addition to them and those lots number 185.
Are, is your group making a recommendation, Linda?
We want to, we want to finish looking at what we have with club owned lots, but I think our interim recommendation is that we put a moratorium on selling the lots that we can control and that would be the club owned lots. I think you can outgrow yourself and it's cutting off your nose to spite your face. So that would be the interim thought, yes.
How much longer you envision your, your process of, of, you know, the fact finding going on? I know you guys are working really hard and Ken Yost is working with you as well. You know, you, you think this will be a couple more, a couple months or whatever? Do we have a fairly comprehensive listing or are you getting close?
I can't imagine that it will be more than a couple of months. It will be well within that period. And we're, I mean, we are trying to talk to experts and I have other people I want to call and talk with and get information from, as well as we want to go around and view all the club of lots. But practically speaking, we do have a lot of lot exposure, even if you exclude those, those places that have a home, one extra lot, excluding them, we still have a lot of exposure.
It's hard to imagine even 50 or 100 more boats on the lake. I mean, especially if somebody went over by a jet ski this week, you know? It's hard to imagine more boats on, even 20 more boats on the lake. Hard to imagine that.
We maintain our, our infrastructure, our amenities and make certain that we have enough water and that we don't, you know, septic ourselves to death. And we are an outlier, outlier. And I'm going to check into this more, but I think the fact that we are a community with 707 homes, each with a separate well and septic, makes us rather unique. And sometimes being unique is good and sometimes it's not.
Randy and.
Linda, is that the primary issue that we're worried about septic and, and water? And overpopulation versus, of course, us bringing in additional members with additional revenue? I guess I'm really trying to understand why we're trying to hold back on this when we're, especially when we're asking for an assessment increase, this is an opportunity to bring more revenue into the hills.
I think more revenue can come simply by the private owner selling their lots to people and that will bring in new membership fee and more assessments. But I think we need to be aware of our surroundings. If we build ourselves out of being a wooded community and into another subdivision, then we've lost what we sell. And what we sell is a wooded environment with an infrastructure and amenities that people like to use.
Just one question, Randy, there, Jim Sigafus, how many boats or how many people on the waiting list for docks right now?
About 50.
And Randy, don't we have 90? How many boats do we have registered now and pontoons and wave runners?
Oh, I don't have that figure. I last registered about 1,000, but that included your canoes and kayaks also.
You know, I, I thought I saw from Susan Pyle, a number of 930, and that's why I wanted to clarify that with you because I thought that's got to be wrong, but it's not, is it? It's 930. Oh.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, keep in mind, Linda, that's, there's a lot of kayaks and canoes being registered right now. If you look at all the racks, any of, any of the lakes are all full.
Well, that makes me feel a little better.
What's our total dock space? What's our total dock space?
I think it's right around 168.
Is that including the north end?
Yes.
Okay.
Tim, that's not counting private docks.
Right, right, okay. But I just, you know, I mean, obviously we're limiting the lake to that, that access accessible dock space, even though we have all those other, that we have close to 1,000 boats registered. It's obviously limited to the dock space for the most part.
All right, I guess that's, I think we've got this one pretty well talked through tonight. Why don't you continue on with the process and, and let's look at this again, you know, as you guys get more, get a little more detail in it and, and, you know, looking at the club lots and what they look like. There's also the point, Annie, that you brought up about lot 2076. You want to handle that?
Yeah, so this was originally, if you remember, we talked about it last month, it's on the north end, right where that watershed comes right through the North Park. It was originally labeled a watershed lot. Currently for sale and it's something that I wanted to throw up for discussion about the club considering purchasing it back just to retain it as a watershed. I know the Lakes Committee had planned to put a few more sediment traps on the north end to help with all the silt and such that comes down through, you know, the water that's coming down, like say, for example, right now.
How big of a lot is that in terms of size?
I could pull that up if you give me a second.
Ah, it's okay, it's okay.
It's less than an acre, but I think it's slightly more than any half an acre. It is. It's three quarters of an acre.
Are people familiar with this lot? You know where it's at and what it looks like?
That creek that comes right down into the north end of the lake starts. Yeah, starts way up the hill and comes down through this lot and feeds right into the north end.
How much would it cost to buy a dock?
Well, I can tell you what it's listed at, but it's listed at 15,000, but I would say we would recommend Randy have that discussion with the seller.
So that's a buildable lot then? It, it sounded like there was a creek that runs right through the middle of it when you first described it or when, I guess, when Jim did.
There is, I mean, I'm not going to ascertain if it's buildable or not, but it's more about, it was originally intended to be a watershed and we had as a club intended to use that space in those watershed lots to add some additional silt traps.
That lot's also got a well on it. A water well.
Okay. Do you think the Lakes?
Where's the water from?
I didn't hear that.
Where, where did the water all come from if there's no house on it?
That, that used to be member owned and well before my time, the club took it back for some reason or other. I would assume that there had planned on being a home built there. I know what happened with that was the member that owns that traded us two other lots for that one and it was a, it was an even trade, the lots. that one and it was a, it was an even trade, uh, the lots and the reason they did that one, one was because it had the well on it and they figured they could sell it. The other one, the other lot was one right next to their house. So, uh, that's, that's why they wanted those two lots. The ones they sold us were buildable lots, which, uh, I sold there several years ago and there's now a house on it. But, uh, Eric, to answer your question, I do not know when that changed hands, uh, from a previous owner, um, to the club. It was, it was in a trade is how, uh, that family, that member got that lot.
Hey Randy? Randy, is that the lot, is that the lot that they got an estimate from South Central and it's outrageous to run power to it?
That's correct.
What was the estimate from South Central?
Any place between 15,000 to 80,000.
Just to run power to it?
Correct.
That might qualify it as almost unbuildable.
Uh, are the silt traps that you're proposing be put on this property, are those going to prevent that north end from having to continue to be dredged over and over and over again? Is that, is that why we're wanting to do that?
You'll still need to, you'll still need to clean those sediment traps out regardless. It, you, the one at the north park, you would, you would clean it out less often because you've got silt, silt collecting and the other ones up, up above it, uh, but you're still going to have to clean them out.
Yeah, and the intention is that it's keeping it in the lake.
I see. So the lake's going to be in better shape if we do this. And do you think the lakes committee would be willing to put any money towards this as well?
I, I think we'd need to talk to, uh, the lakes committee about it, but, uh, I know that they don't have any big projects this year. So I think if, um, the club approached the lakes committee and, and asked, um, I think that they would certainly give it consideration.
Thinking about doing anything with the other sediment trap that comes in where Bora Hill Gate, the old Bora Hill Gate used to be? It's across the lake from where I'm at.
That's the one we've been in discussions with Blankenship about?
That's correct, yeah. That's one place where we could think about, you know, I mean, we talked with 2 L M N already about a sediment trap and we have, management committee hasn't decided to pull the trigger yet to, to get that study done, but it's another possibility too, a place. Is that's there, there's definitely, you know, like today that, you know, the where that water's coming in, it's bringing a lot of dirt with it, so. All right, let's, uh, let's, let's look into this a little, why don't people take a, go up and take a look at it? It, it's just after you get past north park, it's on the, you know, coming from the east side of the lake, it's on the left side there and there's a, there's a realtor sign on the lot right now. So you can tell where exactly where it's at.
Is Randy going to check, see what they might be willing to go down to in price in the meantime or in the interim?
I can do that.
He, he'll do what we want him to do.
I, I think that that would be a good idea. And then dependent upon how reasonable they are, um, certainly, uh, we could approach, uh, the lakes committee and see if they could help.
Good idea.
All right, let's move along and we're, uh, we're getting up to 8:40 already. Um, next one, actually Eric, I had put up South Central Power Line Project with your utilities report. Is there anything more you want to say about that?
I ate a peanut when you asked me that.
It wasn't intentional.
I don't have the agenda right in front of me, so I only got my internet access is, oh, it just came back on, never mind. I, I'll just add that, um, that, that they've added that it's going to be a July 2020 start date, probably taking a good year, uh, to, to dig these lines, um, from essentially the dreaming gate all the way to the front gate. Uh, of course, if the weather continues like it is right now, it'll probably get pushed back. Um, and just that members are going to be contacted by South Central Powers, but they're supposed. Road to their house.
Could, you, you're breaking, you're breaking up Eric, could you repeat that please?
Going on, can you hear me?
Yes, I, I could not.
So I, everything I just said was not heard?
No.
Everything up until members will be contacted and then we lost.
Okay, so members, uh, it's my understanding that members are going to be contacted via uh, mail and potentially phone, uh, to give them their options. And the understanding is that, uh, South Central will dig the ditch for the power and the member will be responsible for, uh, hiring an electrician to bring it back or to make the connection into the house. So, and then they'll take care of, uh, covering it back up as well. So the member will have the, the cost of the electrician to reestablish that service. Anything else? I think that's it.
Do you remember how long the whole project's supposed to last for South Central? A year and a half?
I finally saw, uh, into like August of 2021.
Any other questions about this? All right, and, and as Eric said earlier, the, uh, the utilities committee is going to be working and continue to work with South Central, keep everybody on top of the project. So we know what's going to, you know, what's coming, what the time would be and make sure that people, you know, if there's deadlines in terms of, uh, working with them, that they don't miss them and, and as well for us because there'll be some impact on the rest of us. But hopefully the power line that went down today that took us out of power, maybe won't go out next time. Is that your feeling, Jim Kirk? He's gone.
Yeah, Jim had to drop off, so.
Okay.
Well, I could tell you that tree hit, well, actually like two lots away from my house and so it was absolutely a tree that came down on the lines and took everything out.
Oh, it's way up by your house, okay.
Yeah, well, at least one of the powerages today.
Yeah, I apologize for, uh, sending out multiple agendas today because I worked on it last night and then I went to get it out this morning and I lost internet and power and then sent the wrong one out and then forgot that I'd missed a couple of things that you guys had asked me to put on. So that's why I had to go through that as well. All right, reaffirm the e-votes. I didn't get them, Linda, did you? Linda, are you there?
I, I am here and yes, I sent those in yesterday to the office.
Oh, okay.
Let me, let me see.
I could read them, I can go get my other computer if you can send them to me an email.
Yeah, I, I'll do that right now.
Okay, let me go get my other computer, hang on.
Did you receive it?
Hang on, I have to, have to open up my email. Yep, I got it.
Okay.
All right. That's a few, maybe not too bad. Um. So we're going to start with, those are eight O's, there's a couple of seven O's. We'll start with the first one, which is on April 23. It was an e-vote, the sale for cloud, club lots 2089 and 2094 for 2,500 to Keith and Who's, who's a member who owns three other lots. For 24, it was an e-vote adding a link to the committee section for the health and wellness committee and two, sending out an e-vast with an update from the health and wellness committee that was eight O. May 1, an e-vote for online sales of HA short and long sleeve polo shirts and also steel growlers and insulated cups, steel sales would begin May 15th and end June 1. It was eight O. Five, six, an e-vote for the health and wellness committee to spend $440 to rent a dumpster for trash removal. On May 6, an e-vote to approve paying $1,746.82 to Daryl Norris Greenhouse for chapel committee flower fundraiser. On May 7, an e-vote to reimburse Sherry Panacea for money spent for the golf workday. See the email below for details, I don't have that, but. An e-vote for the, on the, again on May 4th, an e-vote, the reimbursement of $35 each to five members from the lakes committee fund because pontoons were unable to be launched. And then we decided to rescind that, that was seven O. We rescinded that because the decision had been, we made the decision to pay that directly and then have the money deposited in the club account. The funds will be reimbursed by the lakes committee to the club due to the fact that the club has performed the necessary reimbursement already to the members. Please vote to number one, rescind the previous vote and two, permit the lake committee to refund the club. And that was an eight O. On 5/8, an e-vote approved $93.03 from the garden committee funds to Greg Batason for various supplies. And on May 12, an e-vote to approve the ballot language for the proposed assessment increase. The language has been revised to reflect the fact that the proposed assessment increase is on the ballot annual meeting and that is, that was basically a change to make the effective date September 1. And the last one was an e-vote to approve chapel committee funds using, or approve the cap chapel committee using the amphitheater for Sunday services beginning June 6th through September 6th. Uh, may I have a motion to accept these e-votes? And it moves as our second.
I'll second, Jim.
Jim Lloyd seconds, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion carries, we're done with the e-votes. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to new business topics, one issue came up was that a member came to Randy and wanted to put, basically we, we had the pictures of it, the boat. It looked like it was sort of a fishing boat, boat, a 10 footer and, and an electric motor could be attached to it. And since our rule speaks to the fact that we will only allow jet skis, pontoons and speedboats, uh, the member, whether or not they could go ahead and, and get a dock for this boat. And based upon the, and that boat, the, the club or the, the board had instituted that rule either last fall or this winter. And so the, the question from the member was is, or the question we had is, did we need more clarification on what that meant so that we could, uh, make sure going forward that we, we do things consistently? Jim Sigafus, you, the management committee spoke to this issue and you had a recommendation on, on what you think the language would be more helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I think the boat he's trying to put in there is more of a portable boat. And I mean, Tom, you saw me out in the lake Sunday with the same type of boat, it's pretty.
We weren't catching squat.
It's not a, it's not a boat I would be even out on that big lake with, but I think the recommendation from the management committee would be that you just clarify the rule, say a permanently mounted motor on a boat. The boat he's trying to put out there has, you know, he's just got a trolling motor on the front of it and he's saying, well, that's a motor, I can put a gas motor on the back, but it's not permanently mounted, you know, it's not bolted onto the, onto the boat like our pontoons or a speedboat would be. So I guess our recommendation is, we intended that to be, we, we interpreted that would be like a permanently mounted pontoon boat or speedboat or, you know, something of the like, or even that electric, uh, pontoon boat that's out on the lake that's got the paddle wheel on it. I, I guess we would just like the rule clarified, um, what, what the intention of us, hot motor boat is.
I was in on a lot of the conversation on this. That is nothing but a luxurious john boat because it's got two seats in it where you can fish off of it. Uh, I'm assuming, Randy, did you tell him no, he could not put that in yet or not? Randy?
Randy, you're muted.
Yes, Jim, I did. Uh, he, I told him that he could appeal it to the board. I told him of the management's decision. I told him he could appeal to the board if he wanted to. Uh, he said he was going to do that and then he decided not to. So he, he, he gave up that dock.
Well, my, my thinking on this, and I talked to Sue about it and Clint and several people on the lakes committee and I'm not sure who all else because there was quite a thread going on on that. A john boat is a john boat. I don't care whether you put a big old seat on it and put a five horse motor on it, it's still a john boat. A pontoon boat is a pontoon boat. We can clarify that all we want, but I don't think that, that there's always going to be somebody to get around that. We're pretty specific. It's not a speedboat and a john boat is not a speedboat unless you want to sink. It, we can clarify it, but there'll still be somebody that will come along and say, well, wait a minute, uh, here's what I'd like to do. Mounted motor, you know, you can permanently mount, uh, a, a five horsepower boat or motor on a, on a john boat, that just means you don't take it off. I mean, I can take my, my motor off my, my pontoon boat.
Yeah, you got to unbolt it.
Yeah, pardon?
You got to unbolt it off, but.
No, no, it's just.
Just fasten on. I was just trying to come up with a way to clarify what a motor boat is. Our rule says a motor boat, so I was trying to come up with a way to clarify that. I'm, I'm in agreeance with you, that's, it's a glorified john boat.
Yeah, uh, and, and I think when these do pop up, we've pretty well got it covered. Okay, well, he brings it to the board and the board says no. Or management, I don't, it doesn't matter, but, uh, I, I don't know that just saying it has to be permanently mounted, uh, then, then you're going to get somebody come back and say, hey, wait a minute, that, that guy out there in the pontoon boat's got a 10 horse motor on it, it's not permanently mounted, it's just got the, the screws on it to tighten it down to the, uh, the, the trunks, but the back. I'm not sure that'd even do the trick, but, uh, I think Randy knows what a speedboat is and the motor boat is and the, and a pontoon boat. And I think when the guy comes to him, he can just say, well, you can take this to the board, but that is not a speedboat.
I agree.
I agree. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I wanted to make sure that, because there was some question when it came out whether the board had made the policy or where the management was, and so I just wanted to give us a chance to talk about it. All right.
The, that is, that is a rule, the, uh, um, the rules committee, the constitution committee put before the board and that was voted on, that is a rule and.
Yeah, no question, no question, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that, that there was some question about it, that, that we gave it a little discussion. I just wanted to make sure that, that there was some question about it, that we gave it a little discussion time. That was all. Alrighty, next one, food truck policy, Eric.
You're muted. Chris Mittnorff has somebody that operates a food truck. And she was very happy with the, the, the food and was like, you really ought to come to Hideaway Hills. And she would like to go and schedule the, this food truck on Monday from 11 to 7. And probably, I mean, depending on what the board says, but down by the shelter house, or maybe even we find a spot on the launch area where boaters and so forth can come up and, and order food. So then it kind of hit me. So I certainly want to make a motion about that, but what I'd like to get into after that is a discussion about since our lodge is closed and we don't really have a lot of options. And I always keep hearing about this food truck idea. That maybe we simplify the process and it could be, it could be as simple as just having anybody who operates a food truck, contact Hideaway Hills and get on our schedule. We could certainly make it more, more involved than that. But that was essentially, I, I just thought we might want to try to come up with some kind of a policy. So that somebody doesn't have to go to the board or management each time to get approval. To get one of these vendors that comes in and, and serves Hideaway Hills. So if I can at first, can I ask for approval? I'd like to make a motion to allow Rock and Roll's food truck to be available on May 25th from 11 to 7 for our membership to use.
Can I say something real quick, Eric?
Sure.
Before you, before we go forward. You don't know that we're going to put out tomorrow that the club, the clubhouse is going to be open Monday from 1 to 7. Or actually, yeah, clubhouse is going to be open on Monday.
Okay. The reason why Eric is, Chris had committed to making sock lunches for the scramble tournament. So we needed to be open for that.
When the other would have is, is there a minimum sale for this particular food truck? Cause I know some of them, you have to sell a minimum amount of house has to, or the club has to pay the difference.
No.
There, there is not, or you don't know, there's no minimum sale.
There is not a minimum coming and taking their own risk by setting their dose. In other words, there was no setup fee for them to come in and provide these services. So I imagine there are other food service, food, food truck operators. So I, I Randy, you kind of threw me on that one. So would, would we all agree that because the clubhouse is open, that we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by having somebody there?
I'd certainly agree to that.
Okay. All right. And I wanted to throw that out. But going forward. I guess, do we want to allow food trucks? Does anybody want more thought about that? I know obviously our lodge isn't open. People have talked about this over and over again. Should we create our own policy?
I think it's definitely something. I'm sorry.
Jim, I was just saying, I thought the food services committee was that, that group sort of tosses around the, those ideas. And to work out whatever the protocol is, but I have seen what you're talking about, Eric. People are interested in having that, especially with.
Well, what I'm trying to do is, is to make sure that people don't have to go and go to the management or the board to get permission each time, because that may not be timely. I, and it's just a suggestion that we come up with a policy. Nobody's interested, then nobody's interested, but I wanted to present it.
No, I, I, I totally agree, Eric, that we don't need to make these people jump through hoops. Especially on a short notice situation. In regards to what you currently just spoke about, I mean, this has been on Facebook called neighbors for about 10 days. And there was tremendous response of people saying they would support it. And now all of a sudden clubhouse says they're going to be open. This is the first I've heard of it. They haven't been open on a Monday for how many months?
Right.
So and they're having the, the memorial open at the clubhouse on Monday, which they're providing bagged lunches, I believe. I don't know. I, 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 I'm not ready to say no to this food truck on Monday.
What, what is the liability for the club with the food truck?
I'm not the lawyer in the group.
We've had food trucks before.
That's a good question and, and that they are supposed to be, I assume licensed by the state as a vendor, licensed vendor by the state.
And insured.
And insured. So I think that it would be their liability inviting them in though. It would be who was to do something to that effect and have a policy in that regard. Where we have them sign something. Thereby waiving our liability and, and they're assuming liability. So I, I think if we're going to dot our i's and cross our t's. That would be something we'd want to look into.
I'm not against the idea, but just throwing that out. What about they set up outside the club somewhere?
If they do what?
They set up outside the club?
What are we going to do? I, yeah. They want to park at the, the carryout and people want to go there. We can't stop them. Try to, want to.
One thing about this on Memorial Day is if they're going to set up down around the lake, they're going to be more inclined for the, the, the boaters. Again, I don't really like to see anybody competing with our clubhouse, but how late is the clubhouse going to be open on Monday? Their lunches are the going to do carryout. There's an awful lot of information that I'd like to know, but I am going to throw this out. If these carriers, food trucks start coming in here. There is absolutely no reason why they should come in here for free. We should get a percentage of their gross or something. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me that, oh yeah, come on in and take a bunch of money out of Hideaway Hills and don't leave anything for us.
But Jim, in, in regards to that. Okay, I'm going to talk real quick. I mean, they're providing a service for, for people that are here that want, that want that service. I don't necessarily see it as them, you know, taking a lot of money away from Hideaway Hills. We, we need something to happen and we're, until we can get our lodge open and get consistent service from our clubhouse. This is another option to consider.
Just say, I like the idea of us looking at food trucks. I think the process should be through the food services committee. I don't think it needs to wait for a board or management meeting to happen. Because if we don't run it through the food services committee, then we run into what we're talking about right now, where we have the clubhouse open. And we're having a food truck come in and we're competing.
Annie, I agree, but food services hasn't met since.
But those members are report to the head of management who can, you can easily get in touch with because his name and number are published in the echo. So it's pretty easy. If you really want to do that, just reach out to them.
But going back to the legal part of it, I think sooner or later, if we're going to continue to do it, we should have a waiver of liability for the club. But aside from that, I like the idea of having them go through food service and making that streamlined rather than us, you know, debating it each time.
Let me chime in too here. Saturday is going to be probably one of the first days that the weather is halfway decent. So we could get a lot of people down here. And I think, yeah, I understand that competing with the, the clubhouse, but I would say, I think we would do a good member service if we let these people come in, especially if they set up down front. And I agree there. I'm not fighting you, Linda. We should have come up with a policy and all that, but let's get, I'd say get a give a waiver on this one. And Jim, to your, Jim Lloyd, to your point about we should get a percentage. That would be about impossible. Two reasons. Because a lot of these guys work on cash and they're not going to want to tell you, A. And B, they usually don't count their money till they're totally closed and it can take a while. I know a couple of food truck operators. And they, you know, they don't report how much they make. You could ask them, it'd be better to just set up a fee in the future. You say, all right, it's going to have to pay us 100 bucks or 200 bucks to come in. I, I would recommend for, for members with all the boaters and whatever we might have, let these guys come in, set up at the front gate.
I, I agree with you on that, Greg, as far as the money is concerned. I use the, the percentage as an example, but okay, we ought to at least get some money out of them. They're, they're renting some space. As far as Monday is concerned. I, I'm not sure how much competition they're going to be because I'm not going to get off my boat and turn to my backside all the way up to the clubhouse and then back to the boat. Whether there's a food truck there or not. So I'm not too concerned about this one, but I think in the future, we ought to get some sort of a fee out of it. If they're going to come in. And it could be handled through, actually it could be handled through the office for that matter. Randy could set it up or the girls could set it up. Just to make it simpler, because it should be simpler. We shouldn't have to vote on this every time.
So Jim, I, I guess the, the issue with the fee, I mean, this is certainly a temporary situation until we get our lodge back up and going. And to me, this is really just offering services to our membership because we do not have a lodge going. And we should do what we can to encourage people to give them a viable option just to serve our members. And I'm concerned that charging a hundred dollar or $200 fee or whatever it may be. May make it, may, may push people away. I'd just like to be able to have these services available to our, to our membership until we can get our lodge up and going again.
And I think.
I'm with you.
There may be us, I'm sort of seeing there might be some special waiver. There might be, that might be required by the government right now, the state. Because of COVID rules for food trucks servicing places. So they may have to prove that they have the ability to function as a food truck right now under safety procedures with COVID.
I forget where I was today and I saw a food truck out. Oh, it was in the parking lot where the new Kroger store is. There's a food truck out there and I don't, I don't see how that could possibly be anything more than carryout that they can have now with a six foot social distancing.
No, all I'm saying, Jim, is there's an actual, it looks like there might be a special license they have to get from the state to prove that they're following safety procedures along with COVID. So this place may have that Eric, and it might not be a problem at all.
So we should ask for that. Okay.
I agree with that.
I mean, it's just a quick look. So I, I'm not, I haven't researched that issue because I didn't know we were getting in depth on that.
I had told Chris Mittnorff that I would go and, and, and put this in front of the board. So I mean, I guess the bottom line is, I did make a motion that we allow this. And I guess I'd just like to hear how the board would like to vote. If there's a second.
I'll second it.
Second.
It's a big deal.
Jim Sigafus, any thoughts about in terms of?
I really don't think it's going to hurt us that bad. Monday's going to be a busy, busy day in here anyway. In the clubhouse, we got a real limited kitchen. We can only put out so many, so much food. I don't have a problem with trying this on Monday. Really don't think it'll pull that much business. We're opening for the tournament. And you know, we're serving other members too, but I don't think this will really hurt us that bad. But I don't have any objections to having that food truck down front.
I guess, so then we've got a motion on the floor on Monday. There was one question that Mary Beth said that we'd want them to make sure that they're, they have the proper licensure and certifications to come on site.
And a waiver liability for us.
I think that would need to be created. I don't think we have that at this point. But I think eventually we should have it. I don't know that you know, we can make an exception for this time, but I think moving forward, we should have that in our hip pocket. So we can just give it to you know, one of the food, food truck proprietors and.
So, so Linda, along those lines, I'll be happy to take this to food services and, and the other members. And see if we can create some kind of a policy to present it back to the board.
That's great. Someone going to work on a waiver?
Can we ask?
Eric, they may have a sample waiver they've signed for other people. Do ask them about that as well.
Absolutely. I, I agree with you. I, I'm absolutely on board with the, with some type of a liability waiver for them to come in here. So that's not an issue.
All right. Any, any further discussion on this topic? The motion is, is to authorize this on Monday. I think we'd want them down by the front gate and not on top of the boat launch. Just because that's a fair congested area that people are going in and out. That's my personal opinion. But that we would approve the, the boat launch down there and that Randy will work with them to be able to, we get the proper licensure, make sure they have the proper documentation. And then Eric, you're going to take it to the to the food services committee and in terms of getting a more global approach to this so that we can go forward. We know what we're doing. Any, okay. Any, any further discussion on this? All right, all.
Eric and Linda, a couple of sample waivers that maybe we so they can, it's come through to them yet, but they can take a look and maybe we can throw something together sort of quick.
Okay. Do you want us to wait right now or are we prepared to vote?
No, 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 I think you can vote. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure. All right, all in favor of authorizing the food truck with the proper concerns and cares that we've noted here so far on Monday, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Who's going to talk to Christie? Randy going to do that or are you going to do it, Eric?
Um, I mean, I'll, as soon as the meeting's over, I'll let her know that she got the approval, but we'll do something with Randy and Chris to make sure we got everything we need to do.
Thank you very much. All right. Let us move on then to Annie, this is yours, uniform board of trustees. Candidate process. And you gave us some homework to read for this meeting.
Yeah. And I won't go through all of that, but just for those who end up watching our meeting, I'll do just a real quick overview. We're proposing an ad hoc committee for the board to vote on. The main two things here that the committee wants to make sure that is clear and relevant is that obviously the majority of the lion's share of the work down here is done by volunteers. And that we maybe secondly to that, don't say thank you enough. So we want to encourage that. And as a part of this ad hoc committee, we think that it would be helpful to have especially in light of COVID-19 and the fact that we're restricted on getting together as members and talking and getting to know each other more. They're proposing that we set up an ad hoc committee either to be named ad hoc election committee or ad hoc election level process. And this committee will help candidates who are running for the board to have a way. And this committee will help, um, candidates who are running for the board to have a way to share information about themselves. Get people familiar with them. Um, this group will help establish parameters for how that will happen with board or with applicants who are running for the board and encourage everyone to participate. It's optional though, if you, um, if a person is running for the board, they do not have to opt into this process. So, um, it will be championed by a member of the board. They've asked me to be their champion. In terms of, um, the additional information we provided was just kind of a simple sample timeline of some of the activities and just give a high level. Obviously we will report in June, all of the applications for the people running for the board. Following that, there'll be some additional opportunities for us to publish maybe flyer information, give additional echo and email blast information about the candidates. Particularly one that has a bio that gives members an opportunity to see a picture of the person who is running. Um, and then potentially, again, these were just kind of some ideas, not a final timeline, but just potentially a depending upon our restrictions from the state, either a meet and greet face to face or a virtual one if it had to be that way. So with that, uh, we also included some sample questions that we could use for the members who are running for the board, give their answers to those questions. They did reach out to the members who are running for the board and, and ask them if they would be interested in participating and received, um, a positive response. And so what we're proposing is the establishment of this committee to execute a process thereby they give some exposure to candidates who are running for the board, particularly in light of this year, although I would of saying this is a good idea to do moving forward from year to year, just to help people that are running.
I think it's a good idea. I, I think, um, it allows for more than just name recognition, but puts a picture to, uh, the person as well as gives them a better, uh, idea of of what they might, uh, be like as a board member. So I, I am always in favor of more communication. So I, I think it's a good thing.
I agree. I have no problem with it. I mean, the more people know, the more informed choice they can make with, with their going forward. I, I'll be really interested to see how many folks, you know, I mean, I, I'm certainly willing to give it a try and be part of the process. See how many folks follow up and, and want to be doing it, do it as well. I mean, absolutely. The more information, the better. I don't want us to get into a whole lot. I think this is a, a nice alternative to trying to have some sort of political or, you know, campaign efforts. I mean, I think that's, you don't want to down that road or at least not go down a bar, but, but I think, uh, so having some information process and, and me. I think it's a good thing. I, I'm fine with, I'm okay with it. Any other thoughts?
Looks good to me.
All right, Tom.
Me too.
Your term, your term limited too, aren't you, Tom? All righty. Uh, what do you need, Annie, to go forward? I mean, you've got, no one's, everyone's in agreement. Um, are you guys?
I know, uh, John Cook and Eric Boyzko have volunteered to be the founding members of the committee and will certainly look for more members. And as I mentioned, I'll be their board, um, representative. But I don't know, do we need a vote to establish the ad hoc committee?
I don't, we haven't in the past. We just have given a sense of, of going forward. I mean, the not, this is sort of a subset of the nominating committee. Cause these people were all part of it. I mean, that's sort of where it came from. So there's no language there about it. So it seems to me it's sort of a good faith effort by people. Any other thoughts on that? What do you think, Jim Lloyd and Greg Potash? Do we need a, a vote on this?
Sorry, sorry. I couldn't find the unmute button. Uh, no, not really. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I just got this thing this morning and read it. And, um, there was a couple of things in there that I wasn't particularly fond of, but if that's the way you all want to go, I, uh, I don't, I don't see, you know, go ahead.
And your question, Jim, you don't have to have any vote to approve an ad hoc committee. The president can appoint it.
Yeah, that's what I was just getting ready to say. You don't have to have, uh, approval on an ad hoc committee. We do that quite often.
I said it a lot faster.
I'm sorry to hear what, uh, Greg had to say. Say, Greg?
Forget it. I just said faster so we get moving.
All righty. Uh, Annie, I mean, you might want to have, Jim, why don't you reach out to Annie and, and share with her the ideas that you had and the concerns you had and go from there. That's fine with me.
Sounds good.
Do that.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. Lot deck, uh, project update. As you've seen, if you've walked out there, the, unfortunately the foundations that were constructed are not, do not meet the safety constraints that we need for the deck to have people on top of it. So we have re-engaged with, I mean, we've field measured them. We've gone through them all. We've gone through, we now have a remediation plan which is in place so that we don't have to tear them all out and start over. We'll be able to fix those. Uh, we have engaged with one of our, one of our contractors here in the hills who's going to be involved in the next phase. This right now of working with him to go through this again, we're probably going to have to cut all the rebar above grade off. We're going to have to put additional material in the ground. And then we're going to have to drill some, uh, look some dowels down into it. The, uh, the engineer has looked at it. He was off for a good period of time as well with the COVID team, but he's now with, at least working part-time. So we've engaged with him, the plan, their mediation plan been developed. Uh, we will share the, share the plan with, with the contractor and, uh, hopefully it is, I don't think it's going to be a long process, but it's a, it's still going to be a process. Because right now, if we tried to put, you know, that, that deck up there at 11 and 12 feet off the ground with the, with the shape of the foundations that are there, we wouldn't pass. And, uh, the, the engineer won't sign off on them. He's, he's seen them all. We've measured them. The rebar is too close to the outside. In certain cases, they're in the wrong location. And so it's, you know, we're full speed ahead and trying to, to get it, but I, I, you know, just when I went up there after, after they poured them and saw what we had, we knew it right away. We had a concern. So the previous contractor is, is not here. Um, so we're, we're still talking, thinking about how we're going to go forward with that as well.
And Jim, what's the name of the previous contractor?
I think.
The one that did the foundation?
Yes, yes. Yeah, those were.
Have we paid him for that yet?
We paid some. We did not pay all of it. The original.
Are we going to be able to get back what we paid him or not, or without taking him to court?
We'll see. Certainly that's a conversation to have indeed.
Yeah, definitely.
We have to find out how much it's going to cost, you know, that's what we're, uh, we're talking, we're talking to Matt Woodrum. They'll come back with a, with a number for us and we'll go from there. It's, I mean, I just, this is, this is a complete, uh, you know, it's a step we, it makes no sense. It should have been done. It should have been done right. It's not that difficult of a process to do, but unfortunately after we got there and, and got down and again, some of them are just in the wrong spots. They just weren't measured correctly. So that's all I got. I'll, you, uh, in, in, you know, in touch with it. We, we don't want to, you know, I don't want to go away. We haven't spent any more money since then. And, uh, so there's still 40,000 and 15,000 available to go. So we'll go from there. Again, the, well, I, I can share with you if anybody's interested, the plan and you can see what the, I mean, each, each hole has been measured and how we're going to, how we're going to remediate it is, is there as well. And it's my understanding that, uh, he hasn't stamped it. The engineer hasn't stamped it, but he should be able to do that here in a couple of days, that he's, yet this week, I think. All righty. I'm sorry, folks. I, it's, believe me, this is, this has been more, and I, I don't understand this one at all. So uh, Architectural Control Committee. Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Go back to the deck. The, uh, that area doesn't look, um, very safe right now. Um, and we're going to have concerts coming up.
Right.
What can we do to, I mean, I probably need to do more than just yellow tape to keep people away.
I agree with you. The, the plan, I think Eric and I will figure this out. We'll get it done here and then does right away. I mean, there's two ways to go with it. The first way is we're going to cut that rebar off because as you've seen how bad it is and it's crooked and everything else. So we're not going to be able to use it at all. So we can get, I can talk to Woodrum and see if he'll just go in and saw it right off, you know, at, at the grade. That will make it, that'll make it safer. If not, the addition, additional thing would be to, to buy like buckets or another structure to put on top of it so that it, I agree with you. It is dangerous. And we got it. We got, we got to get that fixed up. There's, there's, you're right. Fortunately, there's been nobody really going through there, but with the concerts coming, we're going to have, so if he can't get him, if he can't get the rebar cut off by then, we will, we will put some sort of a cover over whether they're, you know, hell, you know, big trash cans waiting down or something. So nobody stumbles into them. It's a good point. Yep. It's dangerous. I don't like it at all.
Yep.
Can't our maintenance cut that rebar all off? Seems like they would have the equipment to do that.
Uh, that's more of a Randy question than me. I'd love it if they can, because if they can, it takes us, saves us a step. Randy, is that possible?
Randy, you're muted.
Yeah, we could do that pretty quick if that's what you want.
Let me, let me verify.
Cut them all? Are you wanting, wanting to cut them all?
I, let me double check with the engineer tomorrow. Okay. He's got all the pictures and he's got all the measurements, but I think, let me double check because I think is what he's recommending is they're going to put like a grout to cover that and then they're going to drill down through that grout to, to post, to put some dowels in to position properly where it is. So I'm not sure that any, I, let me double check that before I say a hundred percent sure because I, you know, before we cut something off, but I'll let you, I'll have that, I'll have to have that. I'll ask, I think Dan is going to be in the office tomorrow or at least he'll be able to, to reach him. He's been working from home too, but I'll, I'll get you that answer tomorrow. Good call, Scott. Thank you.
I would, I would assume all of it would need to be cut off because none of it that's sticking above grade is galvanized. That would be my thoughts anyway.
Okay. That's a good point. I, I, yeah, I think we're, I'm, my understanding, and again, let me double check to be sure before I say anything, but I, I think the plan is, is to cut it all off. Yes. So let me, I, but I will, I will get that, I'll get that information to Randy right away. And if there's any, if there's any reason that we wouldn't, I'll let you know, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Architectural Control, those will be posted in the echo again. So next month we will vote on those. Is that correct, Linda? I think you nodded your head. Yes, you're muted. All right. Moving along. Annie, new members.
Okay.
Now you're not muted.
Not muted. No, we have one more month. Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
All right. Um, we have following new members, Roger W. and Cynthia A. Coots or Couts. I apologize if I butchered that. Lots 338 and 339, Nancy D. and Daniel A. Henkel, lot 439, Nina Masaria and Mary Jo Hood, lots 1151 and 1160. I'd like to make the motion that we accept these new members.
We have a second from Linda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No pose. Very good. Thank you. All members are accepted. Um, additional business, seeing none. And I have a motion to adjourn to the executive session.
So moved. Lloyd.
Lloyd moves second.
I'll second. Annie?
Annie seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. All right, let's go. Could we stop? Do we stop the recording or do we keep it on? Okay.
Randy, that's, uh, in your hands.
Okay.
Are we going to, is it going to keep going on for a few minutes, Annie, or not? Cause you said so.